Since we are all here and accounted for, I will go ahead and call this meeting for 7:00 PM. We will start with a moment of silence, please. Let the last air for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time I would ask everybody to put your phones on silent, turn it off. Those who have the phones out before, make sure to put them away again. Pretty quick, anyone who can roll call, please. Councilmember Williams, Reeve Jackson, Waller, Lanu, Lozden, and Mayor Snyder.
Here.
I would first like to make a motion to remove item K, resolution 2022-09 from the agenda. This is no longer the name for our work as a council in light of country wings and reservations. The only reason to continue with the side of the order of the order that does not serve the best interest of the common to the people around you. It recorded. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda as is? Any additions, revisions? City clerk now. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reeve Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder. Yes. To begin our meeting, we have a proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program. Whereas 50 years ago, on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed a law measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. Whereas for five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and it is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet nutritional and social needs of older adults. Whereas this year, Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate 50 years of success and garden support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. Whereas Meals on Wheels program, both hunger getting home delivered in the city of Albián, has served our communities admirably for over 50 years. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels program in the city of Albián are the backbone of the program and may not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Albián provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the city that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels program in Albián provides powerful opportunity for social connection for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Albián deserve recognition for their heroic contributions and essential services that have provided amid the COVID-19 pandemic and will continue to provide to local communities, our state, and our nation long after it is over. Whereas the senior population is increasingly substantially, and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding. Volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for another 50 years. Now therefore, I, Victoria Snyder, as mayor of the city of Albián, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as a month celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program and urge every community member to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the national celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Next, we have Ms. Dinesh Bhuwar with the YMCA. Disappear us on one year report.
All right. Hello, my name is Dinesh Bhuwar and I was just saying my address. These are nine group drive, Albián. Okay, so the reason why I'm here today is on behalf of the Battle Creek family YMCA. We did submit a proposal to continue on with the Albián Recreation Department. Up to this point, we have served over 3,559 participants. We know that about 500, 750 of those are repeat participants with about 5% being non-Albián residents who do pay $5 to participate in our program. Of those participants, we serve a multitude of Albián residents, children, adults. I mean, the whole entire community can benefit from this programming. Our hope is to collaborate with other same organizations to kind of broaden our horizon into better serving the youth of Albián. And so, contingent upon this approval of our proposal and a service agreement, we will include an opportunity for organizations to partner with us so that we can better support them and then offer funding that does include supplies. So with this, we will employ about 15 people. And again, that will cover youth programming, equipment, and also administrative costs.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Bhuwar? Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I was able to be at your one-year celebration, and I was really excited about some of the new programs that you're helping make. Could you speak to some of those?
Absolutely. So I know that in April, we will have Elijah Armstrong, who a lot of us do know, to bring an Albián Cheer Club back to the community. And we are also expanding classes and really just trying to employ more people from Albián plus expertise, like Jakil Short, who's a boxer, so then he'll start to provide boxing classes for the community of Albián. And then too, like I said, we're hoping to partner with other organizations such as Playwright Sports Academy, Forage Creative and Expressive Arts, just to name a couple of them. And then I know that we've offered to work with like difference makers and just really the table is open to whoever would want to partner. Again, that doesn't include like funding, it includes access to our staffing, and then to any equipment that may be needed.
We're reading my comments about your water.
The water class is doing very well. It's actually one of our highest attended programs along with Silver Stars and Hip Hop Step. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Is there a clear procedure for programs that may want to partner with you more?
That would be contingent upon, like if this gets approved and then we have a service agreement, it would just basically be, they will come to us and submit exactly what it is they want to do, and then we fund that and then partner with them on it. The thing instructors, again, supplies.
Councilmember, we'll take a providing more information on that when we get to the approval of our.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're at our public comment section. This is the opportunity for members who are in the chambers to come forward. You will have three minutes. We are asking that proper decorum is followed. Please make sure that you are addressing a council only. Those that are sitting in the chambers, please be mindful that there is no cheering, there is no clapping. We want to keep things as civil and calm as possible. So if anybody would like to stand, just address the council by your name and your address, and you were given three minutes.
Here these places, by the way, Haven Road. You're going to be having EDC to voice some concerns about this redistricting that's going on the agenda tonight. Not so much the redistricting, many of you may remember me, and when I served with you on city council, I served on city council for 12 years. I was part of a redistricting that I took part in. I voluntarily agreed to move myself out of my precinct. That was done at that time, you remember that one? How this was done this time, I don't know, but I know the language has come out of it. I hear recall, I hear lawsuit, I hear censure, all these things. I could tell in the public, and that really hurts. There's a lot of good things going on in Albián right now, really good things. But we're counting on you folks to be the leaders of this. What's coming, becoming, is you're becoming the problem. Just remember that when you make your decisions, please.
Good evening. Emily Rebecca, 1217 East Porter Street, currently District 6. I was pleased to see in the comments from many city council members regarding your positive outlook in the work of City Manager Snyder's efforts and your positive outlook regarding her ability to work and progress during next year. I think it's important to note that the support of City Manager Snyder's self-reflection was often in line or even slightly lower than the council members' ratings, which indicates, I believe, a growth mindset that City Manager Snyder has, and it is a moment mindset that Albián truly needs. It also reminded me of the quote, "If someone cannot tell you their flaws, they are the most dangerous flaw of them all, a lack of self-awareness." In regards to Agenda Item D, I do not support the proposed map. It's a definition of gerrymandering. I would ask council to reconsider the maps set forth by the city staff. Allow them to do the jobs they were hired to do. In regards to Agenda Item E, the city does need an ordinance in regard to mobile food vendors. It is not perfect. It is a start, and it's a start as a food established owner and manager in Albián that I can accept. But don't get me wrong, it's not a strong ordinance. It can do more to support the businesses that employ residents of Albián. Nobody's come to ask me how many residents of Albián I employ in any of my businesses, but I'll tell you it's well more than 95%. You allow a donut cart, a cookie cart, anything to pull up outside of my business. You're jeopardizing the work that so many of you say that you are absolutely in support of, which is local jobs, people to live and work in Albián. This is a big piece of it. Agenda I and J. How is this the role of city council? How do these items move businesses and the business of the community forward? I will come every week and ask that question. Seems to be that babysitting is needed. Agenda Item K. I'm in agreement with Mayor Snyder, this should even be on the agenda. You got what you wanted. The contrary voice is not on council anymore. I'm sure many of you enjoy text, in exchange texts of joy, maybe even praise emojis, clapping emojis, laughing emojis, any of the variety. These kinds of items on the agenda is what makes Albián appear adversarial and makes anyone who might watch put any work into Albián worry about being bill next. I guess I'm stupid enough to love Albián enough, want to share my love with Albián, with my son, my husband, and other members of the community.
Good evening. Victoria, Agent Person, Overmeyer 903 Grand Lane. I would just like to say that I'm not sure how we expect the kids in this community to act with civility when you don't act with civility with one another. There are issues in the school system. We have fifth graders that cannot read. We have families and kids that do not eat regularly. And the fact that we are going back and forth and you cannot get along with each other to solve the problems of this community is extraordinarily pathetic. There are a lot of educated people in this room, I'm sure, that probably feel the same. And not educated people in this room that feel the same, and there are people in this community that just don't care. But we do. So I just ask that you please have some civility to one another. Like, we are not in a playpen. You are making decisions that are affecting our lives every day. We are taxpayers. There are kids not eating here in Albián. And the fact that we're fighting about what city council member is on a cellphone and who likes who and what church you go to, at the end of the day, it doesn't even matter. Make some decisions that are beneficial to this community, to the taxpayers. And the ones that don't have the money to be a taxpayer, help them buy homes. Just have some kind of goal. I just don't know, as a citizen and a taxpayer here, what your end goal, what is the endgame? If it's just hating each other, then please step down off of council and do it on Superior Street. And let's just have an all-out brawl, because I feel like every time I come here, I'm coming to witness the fight of. And it's pathetic. We're adults, and you want these kids to act right, and you don't even act right. And I just, I hope that you can get some civility and some honor. I mean, you guys are matriarchs in the community, and you have a voice, and people are watching you. And please stay in mind that these kids are watching you.
March 13, 419 Allen Place. Hi, great. Everything you just said and what everybody else has said. And I just want to say, you took a lot of things off my little cheat sheet here, so I won't repeat them. But in my heart of hearts, I know that you all care and you want to serve Albián to help us to be the best we can be. Let our town be peaceful and loving. I beg of you to stop this waste of time and working and work to put our best foot forward and stop embarrassing us. It looks like we don't know what we're doing, and I know that's not what you want. And let the staff do their job. This is a talented staff you have assembled, and let them do what they know how to do. And I'd like to, and on a little positive note here, I want to thank the city manager and the assistant city manager for coming to the ribbon cutting at the market tile today. It was a great crowd, a great addition to downtown. And with your help, there could be more ribbon cuttings, more welcome ceremonies, and more opportunities for the betterment of Albián.
Hi, I'm Alicia Frey. I'm in the 300th Michigan Avenue. And I want to say that the seats that you sit in are actually government seats. They're not student council. This is not high school, and that is the behavior that I've witnessed. You treat these seats with dishonest, you're petty, you're mean. You literally pulled a guy out of his seat. Like, who does that? And partly wonders with the ribbon chigay, the city manager, whether or not it's an attempt to hold her out of her seat. I second what the woman that just spoke said. This is embarrassing. This has made it so people don't want to come to this town. They don't want to bring business to this town. You are literally stifling progress. You're taking us backwards because you want to be heavily employed. And that's not the goal here. The goal here is to make it so that people have jobs. People need jobs here. We need roads fixed. And as the woman before, the woman that just spoke said, we get help with our children. My daughter and I have been working with parenting helpers. And I don't know about you, but I peeled 200 pounds of carrots in my kitchen and cut them up with a fryer cutter, little fry cutter. We did it with the zucchini. We backed everything off. We paid for it out of our own pocket. And we also arranged it with help from firekeepers, which is something any of you could have done. I mean, like, part of the thing about being on council is to actually have a project and a goal, and to present milestones. And it seems like maybe you're so bored because you really don't know what to do, that it's causing the infighting. But honestly, you need to get it together or go away. I mean, like, if you can't be adults, go home. You want to play in the sandbox, go play outside. It's ridiculous. I mean, like, you literally marked Shane out for a cellphone. It was so, I hope you go back and watch that. Because that is not what a college-educated professional does. It's what a high school girl does.
Mayor, point of order.
And that's really all I have to say, and I'm sorry to bother.
No, point of order, just for clarity purposes, all comments have to be directed to the mayor, not individual compliments.
Anybody else like to stand?
Mayor, can you formally address that, please?
Yes, so again, we need to make sure that proper decorum is being followed, and then comments are to council, not the people sitting in the chambers.
Attorney Kamari, just to confirm, all comments are directed to the mayor and council at large.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to say? Yes, we.
May I ask your first name? Yeah.
Can you see?
Mayor, this is directed to you. Okay, I'm Mike Lanu. I'm Linda's dad. And 912 West Theory. I'm in Lynn Reed's precinct, and I love her. She's great. And I just want to say that that's my daughter over there. She's a person. And she deserves to be treated like the person that she is. She's a good person. And you know what? That's all I got to say. Please follow the rules and make sure that no one gets maligned by someone out here. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Decker. I live at 601 Burrow Street. I just got here from Mark Seal. Forgive me if I'm repeating anything that was said. Excuse me, I agree with Mr. Lanu. I think that we should show respect for one another. Obviously, the city council doesn't ought to do that. I'm interested in him, however, this is toward everyone. The fact that you're paying thousands of dollars to have you people taught how to behave, how to be courteous. We have streets that are broken, but we're giving you money to learn how to play nicely, as the smart lady said in the sandbox. It's ridiculous. The fact that you all went after Shane Martin, the way you did, I'm not friends with Shane. I don't agree with what a lot of Shane did, but it was ganging up, it's club acted, it's high school. As far as I'm concerned, you all should be removed from office. I hope the recalls work. I will help in any way I can. It's disgusting. Thank you.
Sat in around 713 Orchard Drive. I sat there and tried my hardest not to say. But as I'm sitting there listening to you all being bullied and demeaned and degraded and accused of being bullies who demeaned and degraded, the hypocrisy that I'm hearing in these public comments cannot be ignored. I have been in your seats. I have been attacked. I know what you're going through. And my only reason for getting up here tonight is to encourage you all because I know your privy information that the public isn't. And I am proud of you, and I feel for you at the same time. It is hard to break the status quo, and that is what you're seeing. It boils down to a continuation of white supremacy in this community versus racial equity. And they can laugh all they want to, but they'll never call it that because they don't want to be revealed for who they are. So they attack personalities and they attack people and individuals. So I'm speaking this truth. I am encouraging you all, the truth hurt. This is the time for you all that I know are believers, take up your cross, and you do what's right. Thank you.
Anybody else like to stand and speak?
Hi, Jesse Whitfield, 604 Berwick Street. Some of you may formally know me as the executive assistant to the city manager, but I have been here for quite some time. I would like to just maybe simplify, maybe put this into perspective. Whether we're talking about, you know, the discussion item, you know, A, of the city. Whether we're talking about, you know, the discussion item, you know, A, of the city manager, your approval, or whether we're talking about item K of Shane Williamson. Or, or all of them. I'm just going to say that I applaud you. I would keep asking questions. Don't keep buying some deception that is being sold or the public is not made aware of. So just keep doing your job, keep asking questions, don't stop now. You're doing what you need to do. I didn't say I agree with everything or I don't agree with things that you've done, because that's my own opinion. But keep asking questions, keep doing what you need to do. Don't just fall for this deception, please. Thank you.
Jerome, can you hear us? Jerome?
Yeah.
We can hear you now.
No, technical difficulty on my, my end. Please continue with your meeting.
Did you have any public comments?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right, so we will go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. In your packets, you have the minutes to the work seven study session along with the regular section minutes. I want you to approve. Question number seven. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Go now. Three, yes. Next item is our discussion, city manager's one year evaluation. In your packets, you have the matrix over six months evaluation for your evaluation. A lot of copies of all the council members evaluation here as well. You have with us our little trainer, the standard semantic. And so I am going to ask that when it is time for each of us to provide feedback, that we will give out three members for each council member. That this will have pretty likely ahead of us. So Marilyn, would you like to take over?
All right. So this is the productive annual process that's designed for growth and improvement. We'll start by the city manager sharing her evaluation based on the progress made on the items that you've set as priorities for the year. And also to talk about the commitments she's going to make to improve. Based on the feedback. At this point, everyone has completed their evaluations, everyone has read the evaluations. And the city manager will therefore respond based on information and suggestions that were given. If we could think of this in terms of a plus delta, which means plus, feel free to talk about this is working really well, make sure we continue it. And delta, these are the things that we have as suggestions that will make improvements. So that we can move ahead together as a unit. So I will start with the city manager and then let me move from the left room to the right room. Again, repeating what the mayor said, let's keep this to about three minutes, keeping it concise, but going after your highest priorities. So, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Marilyn. I provided you all with my self-evaluation thirty days in advance, a pretty detailed self-evaluation with updates on all of the goals and priorities that you set last year. In addition to some other things that my office's administration has accomplished over the year. I will not, I just, I look forward to continuing to work with you all in a positive manner to continue to move the city forward. Looking forward to implementing the tools and resources that we have learned with working with the Oxy Coach.
Okay, Mayan, come over to council member Lanu.
Thank you. Marilyn, and City Manager Snyder. I, I want to start by acknowledging the courage it takes to be in any one of these seats. And of course, being the city manager, who's our, our chief of the entire city, administering the duties of the city. I, I really appreciate your insight into thinking through what our city has to go through right now. I mentioned in my evaluation that you've done a great job with the budget. And then your background working as the WBD finance, with, with the finance director, WBD clerks, treasurer. And I, I really appreciate the way you're making that information specifically more accessible to the public realizing what they're getting, what their past spends dollars. I also wanted to highlight today, I don't think I put it in my evaluation, but I really appreciate the individual department updates that are being provided on a monthly basis. That's, that's really helpful for getting an understanding of the city's operations and being able to track and monitor where things are at. I also am looking forward to the policy handbook update. I know that's one of a number of things that's been twenty years since it's been updated and that's huge. To, to be able to do that. In terms of deltas, I, I, I'm really struggling in this of people telling us to do our job. And recognizing that city manager Snyder is the paid employee who we get to direct to do the job of managing the city. And this being a two-way street in our relationship. And so I included three examples in my evaluation where I felt like I couldn't do my job due to what I would describe as negligence in providing a timeline and as much comprehensive information as possible to make decisions. And those examples were the M99 reconfiguration. The, the six-month evaluation process. And that four being providing months in advance to all of us in the public packet. And the redistricting itself. So of course, we're going to be speaking about that tonight, but providing timelines in advance so we can see the trajectory of what all of us have to work on together and decide is by biggest request or awkward recommendation in order so that we all can do our job in serving, serving this community.
All right, thank you. And council member Jackson?
Thank you, Marilyn and city manager Snyder. I figured that you did a better job than what you did before. And so that's why I did my rating and I just kind of put it all together. These ratings indicated that the effort and performance in the areas genuinely accepted meets the guidelines expected. So you know how I feel about the evaluation itself, the process. I don't care for it. I think that it needs to be revised. So that we can just go according to what you are doing and what we do know of. And the only thing that I didn't want to hear would be the timeline as well, but the timeline of when we need to come here at a rush time to be able to approve big high-dollar amounts of money. I think that needs to come to us earlier so that we can not make mistakes.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to council member Williams.
All right. My, my review, I'm, I'm pretty new to council. I've only been on council for, since November. So we don't have the, I don't have the, the margin to necessarily judge your work. As everyone else does. But I am, I am thankful for the work that you've done with the budgeting. I've seen the preparation and the execution of maintaining the city and keeping it running. Different events that we have that come up. Whereas things have to be handled expeditiously. And the way that they're handled, to my knowledge, have been executed at a very high level. So I just want to attribute that to you. There was some concerns that I stated in here about, just, we had met before about a programming issue and through the discussion about the program, it's kind of like a goalpost that moved. But with, with the new way that the program will be handled, if voted in at this meeting, that shouldn't be a, a discussion or topic going further. We've met on several occasions and I vocalized to you or verbalized to you at that time that I do see a bright future ahead of you. And I believe that you can do some great things here in the community. And will continue to do great things in the community. So that's the extent of my evaluation.
Thank you. And council member B.
Mine, I think that she's doing very well with the charter and the budget and things like that, but when it comes to leadership. Because things are happening, I don't know if I'm allowed to just talk about this, I was called up on ethics charge that was completely not true. And that she had someone to, to fill the charge because she wanted me off council. And so I talked to those people. I talked to the one that wrote the letter for her. Because she said she was told to do it by her administrator. So she wrote the letter against me. I also talked to the person in the DPW who I was supposed to have gotten in touch with, which was not, not true. I asked for it so that I'd be given.
Okay, so I think we should probably stick now to the evaluation of A, what's working well. And then B, thank you, it's really good to have some examples. Okay.
Well, I will just say.
What suggestions would you make then?
I gave her not to. I gave her to. But for the rest, under the charter and the budget, I think she's doing nice. I told her in the first place when she ran for the first time, I didn't vote for her because the amendment we chose, I thought was more qualified. But when it came around again, I felt that she should be given the opportunity.
Okay, let, let me just ask you, what suggestions do you have? Because therefore she can put them into action.
My, yeah, my suggestion is, before you accuse someone of something, talk to them. Because if she had a change in her policies, then I want to talk to you about something that's a whole different subject. But I don't get anything until a half an hour before me. That I had been called in on the ethics chart. I did not appreciate it, did not remember that, I regret it. Thought about taking it to an attorney, but then I said, no, hopefully she'll change.
I don't know, nor do I know that anybody else knows all the details of that. And to everything, there are two sides to this story. So I want to make sure that I keep this in perspective.
And, and the people to confirm it.
And let me move to council member Lawler.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for the monthly meetings. They do me very much justice. I'm able to, I'm able to ask questions during that time so that I don't take up too much time during council meetings. I'm just going to go over a couple things that I did right now. As far as the leadership, it's getting more, you're getting more confident in the city manager role and it's becoming more visible. The next thing about management skills, I wrote that I would like to see more engagement with concerns of council members' agenda. Get more familiar with each of us and recognize the agenda each of us put forward when we are concerned with a specific item. Meanest halfway to put us at ease in making a decision. And my reason for saying that is when I brought up the Black Business Advisory Commission, it kind of sat there a little bit. I did want to do more research on it. But when we did have our study session about our goals, it was made a priority. So I'm hoping that that will move forward. Other than that, it says in my comments, I realize each council member is different and what is the value to them. As time goes on, you will learn how each of us operate. And I'm positive that this area will skyrocket. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Go to Mary.
So through my evaluations, you know, I think I had a little bit more insight into all of what Haley has to deal with. Her relationships, not only with what's going on here in city hall above the departments, but also the outside organizations that a city manager has to be present for. So there's a lot of things that she is juggling along with, you know, us and what we have going on. But just the running of our city government as a whole. So that is a big ball of wax to deal with. I do hope that now that we have a city manager, assistant city manager in place, that some of our other concerns are going to get addressed. You know, like, what can we do to get more, like, grant funding for some of our pet projects? That was really hard for her to have to focus on when she was dealing with everything else. So I believe Haley has done a great job in her first year. There's been a lot of challenges, not only with COVID, with staff shortages, turnovers that we've had. But I think that having a full year under her belt, having support now in place, that the upcoming year is going to be even better. So I thank you all for your thoughtful evaluations. And this is definitely going to give her feedback to work from, from the upcoming year.
And it says here in the beginning, this was designed, annual reviews are designed for growth and improvement. You have recently did planning and you have set some goals. And you prioritize them so that the staff knows the direction of the city manager, what to go after, as you said earlier, her second, third, and if at all possible. With limited resources, every municipality has to focus on that. I would like to now speak to the fact that there has been a request by the council members to revise or use another alternative evaluation.
Yep, so we have brought forth an evaluation form from our creed that they use. Of course, it doesn't, not everything applies to us because we are a much smaller municipality. But we do have several council members who would like to reevaluate that process. So I would like to garner them the opportunity to put something together based off of that evaluation form. So that we can definitely utilize for Haley's second year evaluation. So if there's two council members, three council members that would like to kind of spearhead that project, I'm rather happy to see that. Councilwoman.
Mayor Snyder, thank you. I, I would be happy to be involved in any part of that. I probably have the least managerial experience and I think that really lends itself to this process. I don't know how useful I can be. I'm thinking of councilwoman Jackson and Williams, just because of their leadership roles in, in that space. My only question is, what is the timeframe that we should be working and when this needs to be complete in order to be utilized?
I would think that having that readily approved by six months into this second year would be good. That way we can address it, tweak it if it needs to be tweaked, so that we can definitely use it at the two-year mark.
Just to make sure we're all on the same page, city manager Snyder has to provide her some, we could think of a mission of month in advance of our deadline, so maybe like four months off from now, basically.
But not for my contract now, I just do one evaluation here.
Okay, okay.
And she does need to know what she is performing to. So that, yes.
So as soon as possible, so that we're operating in that new way.
All right. Would you ask Marilyn? I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work that you put on us. All right, and to the, do I have one should approve the reservation to designate the acting city manager?
So first, city charter, anytime that I'm out of the office for more than five days, you are required to approve someone to serve as acting manager. Now that we have a permanent assistant city manager, I just updated the reservation to anytime that I'm out of the office and he will be the best of the city to appoint her as acting manager. When, there comes a time where we're both out of the office for more than five days, but as it has done so in the past, the chief of public safety would have served as acting manager until. done so in the past, the chief of public safety would serve as acting manager until one of us returns back into the office. I'm not looking to leave anytime soon, but I just wanted to know, I'm wanting to go on a return to leave here at the end of August. So just want to get this put in place. Um, not willing if anything ever comes up before that, we already have it.
Any questions or comments? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, I was hoping that we could amend this so that the finance director would be the third in charge. I've had those conversations with Dr. Lee, but he at this time is not interested.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. Motion to approve the resolution authorizing Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application for the Alvin River Trail.
Sumble.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, with the approval of our five-year plan for creation plan, the council, you can remember, we need to approve by your associates to help us complete that. We also approve them to help us complete a grant application to utilize funds through the M D N R. So we're in the process of doing that. I've been working with a more veteran of white men and associates. We're looking to expand the Alvin River Trail. It will run along Alvin Street. And then it will connect to the river that was completed, or in the process of being completed, um, last year along Michigan, Austin Avenue. And then we are adding a new section to connect to MacIntosh Park. So just one, um, part of the grant application process, we need a resolution of support from the local governing bodies so that we can get our applications submitted. Um, we are looking to have it submitted by, um, application deadline is April 1st, so I'm just looking for recommended approval. Um, there is included in that breakdown of what is on cost. So for total for the project, it's four hundred eighty thousand five hundred dollars with a thirty-nine percent total match on the amount of a hundred eighty thousand five hundred dollars. Um, rough timing, this project will not take place until, um, twenty twenty-four, so we do have time to secure the additional match dollars. We're in the process of working with surrounding, um, community foundations to help fund the last Alvin River Trail project. As well as we do have the county parts mileage that we can utilize those dollars for. And then this is also another way for leverage some of the city's Arla dollars to take advantage of this.
Any questions for city manager? City, quick, wait up. Councilmember Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Motion to approve the second review and action of order number two.
Sumble.
Support.
Then, Mark, did I get it right?
What was that, sir?
Were you going to speak on this?
I do not believe that there was anything to add beyond what, uh, what is discussed previously and, uh, I think it was the March seventh. So with the council approval, I regret that.
And, yes, council, this is what was just on the floor. This is the ordinance that we've gone down last week. Any other comments? Say, quick, wait up. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lynn Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
No.
Motion to approve, um, right next, twenty-two oh three. Mobile food vending, right next? Sumble.
Support.
He is outside today, so I will cover this. Um, this was provided to you out of last round of meeting. He did make some changes to it, just to change on how close the mobile food truck can operate in front of brick and mortar facility or restaurant downtown. We did change it to a hundred feet and we're looking at the map, it still pushes them out inside streets and there is no concern of them operating directly in front of any restaurants or businesses in the downtown area. We wanted to be mindful of that. When we look at, so five hundred feet, that pushed them well out into the city area. So they don't think that's the sole purpose of this ordinance. He still wanted to keep it relatively close to the downtown area as well as the plaza. So the one hundred feet, it does allow for them to be in this area, but not operate in front of any restaurant, restaurants or businesses downtown. That does also include the businesses along Michigan Avenue. So when they're at lunchback, they think as well. So we are looking for, um, recommending approval.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, quick question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The queue. So when we voted last time, it was five hundred feet. Like you said before, it will push the mobile vending out into residential?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that was the only change that was actually made?
That's correct.
And this was proposed by the zoning committee?
Yes, so this was taken before the commission. Um, they have approved this, as well as now it's coming to city council. And once this is approved, we will come back because we want to amend these special positions. I still need to determine a fee for um, the mobile food vendor, it's going to fight for these. So that's the next step in the process.
Any other questions or comments? City, quick, wait up. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Jackson? Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Motion to approve the annual business licenses for Alvin Power and, um, the Red Box that's out by, um, the Mallory?
Yes.
The Mallory, leisure hour and family fair. Sumble. Second. So, Mayor Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, um, an annual process. All of these businesses are aligned for the capital. Utilities, they have all been vetted, you know, the cities do not, are not done in any way, so we are just recommending approval.
Any questions or comments? City, quick, wait up. Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Motion to approve the annual business license for gardens collection from Ranger Way to Public Service and Race Management.
Sumble. Mayor Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So again, these are, um, a yearly renewal. Uh, before you are the business license for race collection. Um, the City Hall, their ordinance is not applied to our local businesses as they are commercial. Um, so we are just, they all have this vetted internally, they're not still going into the city, we're recommending approval.
Any questions or comments? Mayor Snyder? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Motion to approve the recreation program provided by the Battle Creek Y M C A.
Sumble. Sumble. Mayor Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as, um, Mr. Moore gave a presentation at the beginning of the meeting, we have had a one-year service agreement with Battle Creek Y M C A after receiving multiple requests and proposals from different organizations to utilize the city's recreation. Um, dollars, I decided to draft a formal RFP to put that up for bid for any organization who are interested in entering this agreement with the city to provide recreational program on the city cap. And that was released on Friday, November twenty-second. The deadline was Friday, March eleventh. I'm going to receive a total of one bid proposal, which was from the Battle Creek Y M C A. All RFP required documents were included and they have been included in the compacted three-year review. So the post fee for this is to not exceed any cost of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, through this RFP, we have built in additional funds that they are able to subcontract with any other organization to provide any additional service. So that is something new that we did not have this past year. So as Mr. Moore stated, they will then be able to work with some of the other organizations here and clearly granted that they have the proper licenses in, um, in place to run those. And that is just a requirement of the city, um, when you're utilizing the city recreation fund. So, um, we would recommend approval. This agreement will be approved the remainder of the city's recreation mileage, which is through December twenty twenty-four.
Questions or comments?
I know that I personally have taken part on many of the classes that are being offered. Um, you know, kind of similar to what Mr. Moore said, there were so many people who have taken part and are so appreciative of having this opportunity in our community. Um, and it's, you know, I'm looking forward to the programming that can be done in the upcoming year with the collaborations with other nonprofits.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. So this is our discussion, um, on legal thing regarding council members connecting business with the city. Oh, public, I'm sorry. Approved the public, yes. Yeah, motion to approve. Support.
Lars, are you going to lead this, or is that?
You know what? If the council would prefer, I can kind of give an overview of our position as it relates to releasing legal opinions. Now, we would be happy to discuss it if you guys would like. Perfect. So there's a, there's a couple of different ideas that are at play in this particular instance. The first thing that you want to think about is the relationship between an attorney and a client. That relationship is sacred and for that reason, there is protection offered to a client and the relationship and the communications or legal advice that go into those communications there. The second thing you want to think about is really the language of the charter section, specifically section one dash twenty-eight ethics, which indicates that any sort of public expenses or any sort of public funds have to go towards public benefit. So you take these two ideas and you try to reconcile how they come together as it relates to the position of a city attorney's office, uh, as a, specifically drafting legal opinions for the benefit of the city and for the council. So what the, what the city essentially adds to, uh, pontificate and think about is whether the purpose of the legal opinion, as it may have been drafted, was for a public purpose, or whether that legal opinion was drafted for a personal purpose as opposed to the public. So you really need to focus on what you're trying to do with that, uh, with that opinion, whether or not it was drafted to be released to the public, whether or not it was drafted to benefit the public at large, or whether or not that's specifically, uh, as a way to, uh, educate the city council in this city to make sure that you guys are fully apprised of the different components of your own. Does that make sense? I know it's a little confusing. And then the reason I bring up the charter here is that, is that section one dash twenty-eight, sub G, specifies in part that public resources include city staff time. Now, the city attorney's office would, of course, spend time in drafting those, um, in drafting those legal opinions and memos and disseminating them to the council and the city. So it's, it's important to keep in the back of your mind that that time would be a public resource and public resources have to be spent on the public, uh, for the benefit of the public, rather than any sort of individual interests that there may be. Of course, it's up to the council whether or not they want to waive attorney-client privilege in that regard. That is certainly in your guys' purview and what you guys are, uh, permitted to do under the city ordinances. But again, you guys are the client and we aren't the attorney in this, so the ability to waive that attorney-client privilege is on you guys, that's the thing. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions if I didn't confuse you all with that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, I think I'm following everything.
Perfect, perfect.
I, I also think that it's already within the charter what council members or public officials or people who are already in relation with the city have to do to abide by, um, the charter to conduct business with the city.
Right.
So that's all public knowledge as well.
Right, yeah. The charters are public knowledge. Any sort of ordinance that's on the books is all public knowledge. So if there was any sort of issue as it relates to any individual council member or any member of council or any, uh, any member of the staff, they would have to fall back to any, uh, any of the charter sections or ordinances in the charter that would then provide that ability to reinterpret that law.
Any other questions? City, quick, wait up. Councilmember Lynn Hill?
No.
Williams?
No.
Reed?
No.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
No.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Motion, um, not looking for motion, we have a discussion of concerns regarding council members' proposals for recreation. Here from him, Jackson, move it up.
Yes, I do. Um, I want to, um, give some consent to the proposal that was given and inquired. And it says, um, you probably already heard that one of our neighbors had filed a recall, an actual petition against me. Because of the strong relationship we worked to build, I'm sure it was surprising and confusing to hear those allegations about me. I am still the same honest, hardworking person who understands our community needs. You voted for me and I've done my best to represent you well. I'm writing to share the full content and the full truth about what you're hearing. Their current recall threat is a distraction for several reasons. I want to explain how we got here and why this is a sad moment for our city and our youth. First, before and since joining city council, I've worked with our youth both at my church and at my job at a local school district. I really believe everything we do, I believe in everything that we do in Alvin should be to make our kids' future brighter. Because I believe that so strongly, I started a nonprofit work with Alvin Youth and during the last year, I collaborated, collaborated with the Y M C A program in Alvin to use the Washington Gardeners School to work with kids. This was a great success and reached youth from across the city. Second, I did my due diligence in asking the manager, city attorney before submitting my proposal for Recreation Village Fund. When I learned that the city had surplus recreation village funds after a year-long contract with the Battle Creek Y M C A, I reached out to the city manager and city attorney to see what's possible and make sure that I act, I acted legally and ethically because of my role on council. The city manager strongly encouraged me to submit a proposal in a few emails with the city attorney. He explained that I can submit a proposal as long as I follow the process list in the city's charter and ordinance. Third, the recall language doesn't include the other actors and their actions that led the foundation of the, the foundation of the false allegation, allegation, I'm sorry, of unethical behavior. The city manager shared my proposal with Battle Creek Y M C A CEO Jill Heinz and only one city council member, Shane Wilson. Shane Wilson was a paid counselor to the Battle Creek Y M C A prior to Y M C A receiving this contract with the city. At the time when the city manager shared my proposal, I was concerned and curious why the city manager emailed, emailed it to Heinz because Heinz also would be submitting a new proposal to the city for another year of city recreation fund, funding. I was also concerned and curious why the city manager emailed my proposal to Shane Wilson because my proposal was the city and not the Alvin Community Foundation. In, in terms of proper notification, the city manager should have shared it with Mayor Nathan Wilson. Unfortunately, shortly after submitting my proposal, the city manager sharing it with Jill Heinz and Shane Wilson, the city received a Freedom of Information Act FOIA request from John Face. The request had the actual dates and times in the emails that were shared from with the city manager suggesting that either the city manager, Heinz or Wilson shared them with Face. It seemed like a coordinated attempt to create conversity. Even when I had dotted my i's and crossed my t's, I was deeply concerned that whether then, whether then see my proposal as a way to help local youth face what unfortunately and inadvertently described my proposal in the very way that the sponsor of my recall has. I decided to pull my proposal. It's also not lost on me that a politician differences opinion of city council developed between me and Wilson both the attacks from John Face and the following of a recall took place shortly after any. In fact, after the March seventh, twenty twenty-two, during the council meeting, Wilson entered. Wilson entered my personal space and said in a very disrespectful and taunting manner, you didn't get that money. I was shocked. Distraction is one of the tools used in politics to take the public's eyes off the real reason this recall is distraction. Our city has many needs, youth program, jobs, streets, sidewalks, healthcare and food access. I'm committing to solving those problems with your help. In the coming weeks, I will be hosting a precinct meeting and going door to door to let you know about the many things I have done to strengthen our community. I'm still, I'm still the same honest, hardworking person you trusted and I will do everything I can to continue serving you. For more information on the process for a city council member or other city officials to do business with the city, view the Code of Ethics, I mean ordinance, section six fifteen point four, business dealings with our state here. Because it was so early in the process of my proposal being considered, I had not yet submitted a sworn statement explaining my proposed business dealings. I have had to submit that statement to the court before one council meeting so that my proposal could then be reviewed or approved by the city council or another final meeting. Then you can also go to our other, to our, to our charter that also provides in section five.
I shared with you on the Saturday session and my role as city manager, making sure that I'm doing, being this too helps us attention, doing my due diligence and making sure that it's proper and moving forward. I'm happy to share the email response I received from Jill Hines, Director of the Battle Creek YMCA. My purpose in providing that to her because part of the proposal was at the school program. Program, there are state requirements that should have have licensing in order to do that. I'm glad that he provided that response to, to anyone who would like to see that with her sharing that information with you. As well as reaching out to Shane, who are Director of Community Foundation, he shared with me, his meeting with council member William Jackson to set up a fund group about community foundation for to solicit grants. Within that proposal, there were things included in their activities that could not be funded by the city recreation dollars. You cannot support a program that does daily devotionals for any religious facility. That's against tax pay dollars. So in my providing that budget proposal to Mr. Williams, who went to Battle Creek, I mean the county community foundation, it was to find additional dollars to support council member Jackson's program. And that the requested amount was more than what we had available here at the recreation, within the recreation fund. I also have other organizations reach out to access those dollars. So it's hard, I can't pick and choose which organization I'm going to do without providing a proper proposal and budget to support that. So in my, it was in my role as city manager. I'm sorry that I finished you in any ways, but I have to make sure that what I do for bringing a recommendation to council that it all works out.
And remember, there was not a, since we brought it up, I didn't ask for any dollars personally. You asked for a budget. And I first, exactly. And then the other thing that you did say to me, which you have already said something for that. Is that I just didn't feel that it was right for you to take my information and give it to Shane without asking before also she. And I'm sorry, I just. Sounds, that's not right. Thank you.
Motion to approve resolution. Some more. Councilmember.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Satter. I, I, I hope now my, my thoughts about how to respond to what has been happening outside of the chambers unfortunately and not in the proper channels that we're here to address things. And I think that the, the resolution speaks for itself. And I, I just wanted to add that none of what is outlined here or is happening here are isolated incidents. Each of us is actively creating the dynamics that either build or grow the community and the public trust that is required in order to govern. As much as each of us has worked and waited for self accountability, which we have been taught by our codes to enact, I have also documented the abusive power and the harassment of one another and displacement of responsibility that is characterized the majority of my time on city council. And I, I realize based on what you shared earlier, prior to sharing that, I wrote this over a week ago, that it would be viewed as an addictive political motive and adding further spectacle. However, I see this as the due process that's necessary to make the changes that our community not only needs but also deserves. And I believe in the efficacy of restorative justice and I plan to continue building and working on the reality of what's happened and continuing to happen in our community in order to strengthen our community and reflect all of those people in our community who live here right now to our highest ethical standard. And with that, of course, I have to take full accountability for my part in contributing to what is happening. And I look forward to the continuation for us to continue to discuss this and reflect on what has happened here and not just continue to sweep things under the rug. I think that it's, it's really important that we are able to discuss these things. And so it's, it's just important that the public understand when, when you're seeing things come about and it's, there's a lot more happening than you might ever be able to see with, we don't bring it to the forefront. And that's all I have to say about that specific thing.
You have a comment?
Yes. Thank you. Um, I, I support this resolution. March the first was the most degrading part of my council member journey. And it's hard for me to say it because I never thought that I would experience some things. But on that day, I experienced degrading, intimidating and aggressive. Something that women have a hard time in their workplace. We already have a hard time in the workplace being accepted. Especially black women. And my support for this censure is saying from exactly that. I had to journal the March first incident. And actually put actually putting in it in a format to say to my daughter, my nieces, my granddaughters and my great nieces. That it is my responsibility to set a path that my ancestors once after me to not ever take being degraded because of what you believe or even being a black woman in any setting that you do. Being degraded by and being watched by a childhood friend is something that I will always remember. And it spoke to my soul on so many levels. For a person to say black lives matter. And I question that. To be watched and be degraded and to also say that black lives matter. To put myself on the line to show transparency and trust as I was taught in the study sessions with Ms. Marilyn. It's really hard to do, to do that, to put my to put my my thoughts in my not so strong areas and put them out there to only be degraded is concerning to me. And so having the duty to put this forward to my daughter, to my nieces, to my granddaughters and to my great nieces. I will do just that. And whatever it takes for a strong black woman to not be degraded and to stand up for herself, I will do just that. And so for that reason, I support this censure. Because it can't keep happening in the workplace, in the place of government. And I hope that I can one day submit my letter to my nieces and my daughter, my granddaughters and my great nieces to you. So that you will know what it's like for us to have a place in this society that so degrades us. And you will use it in your sessions and you further go on to teach. And I would so much love to submit it to you not to just degrade anyone for their actions because I do know that we all have a job to do. But so that you can yourself know what it's like to be a black woman and be degraded.
Thank you so much. And your, yes.
There's been several times that Mr. Williams and I have had conversations that have not been good because he likes to run people down. And so I, but me, I don't run down either. And I just told him one time, the first time he got on council, he came to me and he asked, he, he was running down our city attorney and he wanted me to about help him to get our city attorney fired. I told him, no, I would not. I told the city attorney, I told the attorney that he wanted to come in for what he was trying to do. And I told him, I'm not going to be a part of anything else. Then we had a discussion about how Holland Park was related to this voice and he hollered and he told me he wanted me to bring in all the information about Holland. I got to like, tell me, I just done a twenty fourteen when I started Holland Park, it should all be in the office. He could probably find it there. There's been other times that he has verbally attacked and it's, it's, well, it's about nobody longer but women. He just got on here. So. But, but you know, he, he wants to be nasty with the total agreement. Total agreement. I'm not as thin shell as my colleague. I really feel sorry for her because every time we talk with her, she's almost in tears a lot. But I don't think the council needs people like this because and then he goes out and makes it seem like, so we are the ones that the, that's the problem. And that's not true because I've got some emails that he sent around that, that show that he is really not, he's a talking.
So now that I'm gonna sit here and defend Shane's action because I'm not as far as spoke with him. I told him that the situation that councilwoman Lawler was describing how it was not, this was not the best place to have that discussion. The, the conversation started off just questionable. And there's not very many of us that were here that evening to have witnessed that. But the conversation grew to frustration because there was no answers forthcoming as to why certain members were getting asked and other members were not getting asked. And so I did not resolve the conversation escalate. I never saw him threaten you. Never saw him come near you because he was standing behind the counter. But unfortunately, the only threatening words that I heard that evening, councilwoman Lawler came from you. Where you, as you were walking out the door, you pointed your finger at him and you said, I'm gonna get you. So that really was the only threatening words that I heard. Yes, he was pushing you for answers. Yes, this wasn't the appropriate place to have that discussion. But since the actions happened right here in chambers, he was trying to get answers. So I understand and I'm not minimizing your feelings. I understand that you're hurt. I would be upset if I were in that confrontation. But I guess I just wanted people to hear that part of it as well.
Thank you. The words that were said to me was I was being sneaky about something. And I said, I know you're not talking about being sneaky. Because I can name a lot of things that you have been sneaky about. And he said, put them on the floor. And I said, no. I got you when we get in the meeting with Marilyn. That's what I said. It was members from the city staff in here and for you not to sit there and hear all the degrading things that was said to me is still disappointing again. You sat right there and saw him ask me all these questions that I could not answer. I kept saying, ask Ms. Reed about what her intentions were. He asked me about a resolution that I said I had wrote. And he said to me that those were some pretty big words in that resolution. That hurt my feelings. Because in our study session, we was asked what was our weakness? And I put my weakness out there about saying things in council meeting and not getting the words right. So for it to be used to somebody else's advantage to degrade me, I think that's wrong. And that's why I asked Ms. Marilyn to review this letter that I wrote to my, to my daughter and my family. You sat there and you watched that man say it up to me. You sat there and you watched it. We was no other than two arms length. And yet still, your Facebook page says, black lives matter. We grew up together. Everybody knows I'm not a degraded person. I answered everything that I could to the best of my ability.
We are colleagues in here and as a colleague, he was trying to get information. He was getting information that I didn't have access to.
Twain of border, I have my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Satter, I was in this space when this happened and I, I have to admit, when I learned from my colleague, her experience, my heart sank and I felt extremely guilty because I was so intimidated by what I was experiencing standing over here and trying to just avoid council member Williamson by talking to the city engineer and literally talked for over thirty minutes while he continued to just come back and come back. So that is a physical side of this. He is chasing us around during the study session and making sure that we can't avoid him. That, that's called harassment. If somebody doesn't want to talk to you, they'll say the comfortable talking to you because how you take information and share with a news media website that is intended to tear us down. Those are all factors that determine why something like this is important. And, and frankly, to say that she was making a threat when she was operating out of self defense and trying to keep things in the public forum that's intended to be instead of all these sidebars that just let things derail. I, I think that that's, that's very concerning to, to. I, I think that that's, that's very concerning to, to hear that be shared tonight.
Congresswoman Ray, you have got it.
I have an email here that I sent to manager Snyder concerning Shane at 20, June 21st meeting, when people were talking about marijuana. And those of us who did not want to vote in marijuana, he told us that we could be, you know, that we could get the city soon. And he went on to say, you know, that we were causing problems because we were not doing what our constituents wanted. And on and on with a lot of derogatory things. And I sent this to her because I brought it with me. And I said, I personally am sitting tired of Shane's rough demands when things don't go as he wants them to. We're trying to start properly for other councilmen. We are not in for, we are in for some problems with that intent. People in the community are talking about this recently. He can speak for himself or when he directs it to others or attempts to make a scene that we are going against our constituents. He is out of order. I will be discussing this with M M R next week. It is not going to be tolerated. And if you want constant battles at the council meeting, then continue it. And that is what it's going to be. There are other members who feel the same. And then there was another one that he said the same thing about marijuana. And he said, you're, that we could all give ourselves in trouble. You don't know who's watching. And you know, that really made me think that I needed to provide me a physical indication. Because I live alone and I have to go home and start around my bathroom and stuff like that. And you don't know who's gonna do what to you. Because when people say stuff like this in public, for all of you here, and you can make your decision after what you have been doing. My life could be in danger.
We're gonna have, have a vote. See if I can agree on it.
Councilmember Williams.
Excuse me, Mary.
Yes.
What's the vote? So.
Approve the resolution.
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Who you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, one for 10 minute recess, so we can beat the press, right? Five, maybe, maybe five.
He just laid up.
Before we get into the rest of.
Motion to approve 2022 11 to declare precinct six policy vacant.
Some more.
Do you manage there?
Yes. So this is just the formal process. Once you all have cleared council precinct six vacant, then we want to start the process to get that filled. Anybody interested in submitting that and have submitted their application? You guys have 60 days before we make points on the vacant roles. So this is just kind of get that process going. Questions?
I just wanted to go on the public record and say, I think that part of our due diligence that maybe have more than just a 30 minute session to interview somebody to take on this role. And so I don't know what processes we need to enact before the interview happens. But I think having some time between hearing from a candidate and having to select them would be part of our duty.
So Larry, do you know what we need to amend to make that happen?
I believe that can be added on as a future agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Possibly to discuss moving forward with how you, the council would like to proceed with interviewing whichever council member would be filling the vacancy for six.
Possibly the Dallas study session for the word.
Or possibly the size.
I, I'm asking for, and I, I honestly, I would like two interviews. I think that this is a very important meeting. People have to run campaigns and get elected by voters to take this open service. So I was hoping for at least some time in between the interview and the selection, not just immediately.
Yeah. So it's just, it's just, it's interim.
I understand. I was just saying, maybe if, if you're thinking of a study session, having some time, at least a few days in between the actual selection.
Yeah, we know how to do that. Have a study session as long as all the applicants are in the room at the same time. Because anything has to be equal. So.
Right.
If we interview, we have to interview all. If one of them can't make it, it can't be done.
Perhaps like a Saturday and then Monday, or something like that.
Would you, would you be opposed to doing it on Monday before the meeting that we, so two Mondays in a month? The first Monday, you do the interview. The following Monday, you vote.
Whenever, I know, I know you have a, a particular schedule, so I'm just thinking about that, whatever works for on our schedules.
I just don't know if we need a whole Saturday though.
No, we wouldn't need the whole day. Just, I know that that's a day that you might have a day. We would all have a day.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I was just wondering, maybe we could apply it to the, set the pre-session before the meeting. We'll just take an hour of that day.
Yeah.
Is that fine?
I just want to have more than a day to make that decision.
Okay.
You guys can set up any processes, just have 60 days until that. So usually we have an application process open for at least four weeks. A month to give time, to give people enough time to apply for. So then that kind of cuts you down into four more weeks. So just as long as you have it filled and appointed before that 60 day work.
We have motion in this court. Any other questions?
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
We could add anything we would like to see. Congresswoman.
All right. So I am gonna say a lot of things, and Jill, I can send these to you. But I, I wanted to have the approval of our communications plan so that we can be able to provide that online so that folks have access to that. And I saw also that we have a policy, so forgive me if we've already done provided that, but maybe we could see the policy as well in the packet for the, for the approval of the communications plan for the city. I also got really excited in meeting unit trucks, who our city already is paying for to provide data. They have a transparency plan and then a premier plan. And the premier plan allows us to really dig into data analysis. And I know the city manager has prioritized data generally needs assessment through the different grant writing portals that we have. So I wanted to have a discussion and approval of upgrading from transparency to premier and see how we can compare to other communities and really use that to leverage data. The third thing that I had was updating our rules of procedure to both address and prevent the misconduct that has been overlooked and really needs to stop in relation to communication. And how information should be shared with council and courts. Able to get to the media, specifically amongst other things. City Attorney Harpess said that that would be something he could assist with based on what has already happened. Two more things. One, I think that we need to discuss and improve the hiring of a new coach and actually engage the council in the process of selection and have a competitive bid and interview so that we really have a chance to participate in that and, and be able to better utilize that. And we all agree that it hasn't really helped us yet. The last thing is the discussion and approval of a van tour of the city with separate vehicles to ensure we're advised by the opening pack. But that's something council member has localized, something that I've handled. And I think now's the time of year where we're really seeing the roads and sidewalks and what we can do to improve the, the beautification of our city.
You have the original comments?
I'd have to have one there, uh, removing the fee for, uh, use of power park for June 10th and for the fifth week. And June 10th, we're actively, not the Mrs. Carrie Andrews in the past. She was the person who started June 10th in Albián. And so we're planning on a celebration for that 12th.
What was the first part, Mr.? What was the first part of?
We're removing the fee for the cost of the park, international highway, and for the week. Both of those dates, I mean, both of those things give a lot to the city.
All right. Hold on. So people in the gallery can stand and speak again, whether the rest of the Congress that were in the council as a whole. If you would like to state your name and address, you have minutes.
And Ho, 601 West Dairy Street. And Mr. Ho will be 104 on April 3rd. This meeting has been mine bother. Too much to take in for the once. But my concern is, we all here are religious. I'm pretty sure all of us go to church. So we come in here, we have silence, we pledge a flag. Why would you support agenda or a project that don't allow children daily devotion? Why? Stop your silence. Long as it's silent, stop your pledge of flag. But yet you're gonna stop the children daily devotion. Thank you.
Mike Lanu, 912 West Dairy. I echo this young lady's comments and say, hey, aren't we being a little hypocritical? When we take a moment of silence to recognize our spirituality in the beginning of a meeting, we say a pledge of allegiance, one nation under God. And then we disallow something like a beautiful program that is gonna benefit children. Maybe give them a good meal once a day for a while. Thank you.
Kevin Miller, 208 Booth Drive. Three minutes, right? Okay. I, I just have a couple of questions. Can some of my questions be answered if this just have to be comments? Just comments? Okay. I, I, I guess I don't know who, who to address certain questions. Can you point me in that direction then? First question is about the ordinance, the abandoned. I don't know what the ordinance was about cars and vehicles being in yards, not being driven, animals living in them. We used to have ordinance on that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we still have one?
Still have one.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I'm asking because I spoke with the, um, the guy riding around in the vehicle. And he says that that's, that's being reworked and there's nothing he can do. And I've, I've spoken to abandoned vehicle with animals next door to my house for the last two, three years. Nothing's been done. And he says it's up to the council. So I'm just wondering what's, what's, what's going on with that? Okay. Second question. Splash pad, McIntosh Park. When is that, when is that scheduled to be done? I, I guess I'm asking, I, I don't.
We're breaking ground this way.
Okay. Are the streets around it gonna be done also? And, and, and I'm just addressing that to the six-year plan that you, that you have. And I didn't see Beamer, Dean Drive. I can't think of the street. Boyd, bro, Boyd, um, around that splash. So I guess I'm wondering why we put a million dollar splash pad up there. But yet people just want to be used and have to drive on those streets with nine attended potholes. Okay. Third question is, who do I see about a special assessment on my street, Booth Drive? Because I've been asking about that. It's been a safety issue way back when Jim Linderson was, was running that department. Was that four or five years ago? Now, I don't even see city streets going down Booth Drive. It's so bad because they, they can't patch you. I guess they can't patch you on dirt. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out who, who do I see about some of these questions? Because this stuff is not being addressed. Now, I also noticed on that, on that proposal, I'm seeing streets up around our college, Irwin Avenue. Irwin Avenue just got done, what, two, three years ago? A full street depth. So I'm trying to figure out, why is Irwin Avenue on there again? I see some streets just off of Irwin Avenue. And this stuff is supposed to be voted on. Now, I'm wondering, is it full disclosure about what you want us to vote on? Is it being addressed because things are being put there and we're, we're not being told that? Yeah. The fact would be, maybe I'll give my councilperson and we can follow up on some of these questions. But I'm doing my homework and I'm keeping an eye on everybody here. And I'm listening to what's being told. And what you're being told or what we're not being told more or less. Okay.
Anybody else like to stand and address council?
Emily, the reced 112, 1217 East Porch Street, with the approval of the, um, the new precinct maps, I would, um, just wondering when those go into effect. I'm impacted by that and how that impacts, if I should pay attention at all to who the candidates would be for precinct six, who could potentially still be mine or not mine. So I would hope that maybe some information will be put out from the city website or maybe by the clerk's office about when those changes go into effect and impacted residents with that approved change.
My name is Kena Williams. I'm at the 208 West Center. I do not like standing up here and talking, but my heart is hurting right now. I live my life in advocacy to others. And I heard women in this space speak their truth. And that truth be dismissed with perfectly logical explanations for individuals' behavior that were totally unacceptable. And I think every woman in this chamber should be appalled that women and women of color are disrespected, degraded, mistreated, bullied. And that behavior was approved in a lot of ways by our mayor. I'm sad. We gotta do better than this. That's the truth they spoke. That's the truth we need to hear and understand and believe.
I think we're also in a public council. Anybody else like to stand and address council? We do have a little correspondence that we were asked to read to have added into comments from David Atkinson, 108 West Dairy Street. For quite some time, both our Albián City Council
For quite some time, both our Albiens City Council and Marshall Board of Education have been ignoring the difference between what is legal and what is ethical. Both act without regard to what the broad community wants. Making high standards of honesty, integrity, impartiality, and professional conduct by our elected officials is essential to earn and keep public confidence in local government. Communities are in trouble when public officials default to arguing the legalities of their actions and ignore the glaring ethical questions. The comment is in free fall because the majority of members on the school board and our city council focus on their personal interests and are disconnected from the broader community, community which elect them. Lindsay Davis Gamble and on the board of education, the new regulator in Jackson and City Council are all proud cheerleaders for funding Dr. Matthew Johnson's vision by a massive school bond. These individuals aggressively ignore the overwhelming condemnation of Johnson by this community and instead continue to praise Johnson's empty promises while remaining silent on the devastation and division he delivered. Our city council spent ten thousand on training, ten thousand dollars on training to work together ethically and professionally, then promptly plunges into redrawing Alvin boarding districts to remove a sitting council member they dislike. Jackson is using her position in the Oregon City Council to fund her personal organization to teach children about honesty and integrity and ethical behavior. Getting taxpayers' dollars to persons to teach ethical behavior. Every council member who fails in acting to stop this blatant abuse of power and possession is just as guilty. Such conduct is just as unethical as Lindsay and Davis get paid to represent Alvin College in real estate transactions while promoting Alvin College's agenda before our school board. The wrongful exercise of lawful clarity by an elected official is misuseless while favored in none of these. Legal issues are left to the judicial system, but the voters ultimately decide what level of ethical conduct we demand of our elected officials for what level of indiscretion we are willing to accept. Voters must act to recall for our school board and city council. David Atkinson, one oh eight West Erie Street. That was a little correspondence that was asked for us to.
Seven thirteen Orchard Drive, Sandy Brown. I have, I served on council. I have been engaged in my community for years. I have never seen what I just saw occur. I don't know if the council approved that written communication. I don't know where the timing was on that because I don't know if that was under three minutes or what, but that was a whole written comment um, written by someone who's not here tonight. I've never seen that happen, ever. And I just had to point that out.
Uh, Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Security Street. Thank you, council, for your hard work because public services is hard and a couple of things, I think someone mentioned, uh, councilman Lou Lou New mentioned, lots of times in Albiens, there are things that happen within the government that the most, you know, most people in the community do not know what's going on, right? Um, and there's, there's things about confidentiality with employees or the situations where the council members have their hands tied. And what I noticed, uh, several months back, um, and I actually wrote a email to the council about it last September, is there was a pattern with Councilman Williamson where uh, what I would notice is that someone on the council, whether I was in the council back then or current people, they'd bring up a, a, a policy or something for the council to consider. And it wasn't in keeping with his political opinion. Um, so what would happen is he would go and talk to people who were on the board at the community foundation. You would go and kind of, he's like a poor people, who were people you'd go to and misrepresent what was going on. They'd come to the council meeting, come up here, yell and scream and say, we're against it. We haven't been paying attention. We don't know what it's about, but I'm really just, you know, concerned, right? Um, there would be communications about the inquiry, the hour reporter, uh, John Face and City Watch. And so it was a manufactured thing when really his colleagues were trying to do the right thing. Even I was in the council, I kind of faced the same thing. I hadn't shut the council. So I, 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 I want to applaud the council for calling out, um, his bad behavior. Uh, but I think really what, what Sonia said earlier, the, the problem in Albiens is we, we champion and call ourselves a melting pot. It's all about racial diversity, but there is some serious divisions in class and race in this community. Um, I applaud what, for example, um, certain families are doing here to develop downtown. But the thing is until we focus on jobs and raising up everyone, lifting all people in the community, even little things like that that happen are not really stemming the tide of the decline in the community. Um, I, the last thing I'll say is, uh, Scott Smith came and did a presentation in twenty eighteen to the Council on Governance and I don't really know the qualifications of the current facilitator. I, I know she's not an attorney. But I think he needs to come back or someone as an attorney has to come back and build over that because you all are elected officials. You have a duty to perform and sometimes it's going to be the, the division or disagreement. That's politics and that's policymaking. That's the sausage making of government, right? Um, so to try to flatten that out is inappropriate. And I would also say to the mayor, you have got to get some training on following the rules. That was extremely inappropriate. Because what you said, the president, president's now is that if I give you a letter, you're going to read it and go over the time limit every time to pull it down? So you didn't follow the rules. I mean, that's, wow.
City manager report. Thank you. Copy of my report is included in the packet, just the updates. So the Mr. Ross tells me you approve the reservation back in December to the board of the city of Albiens. Originally, the city EDC will be working together for that project. We will receive, the city will receive a conditional proof condition on a virtual thousand dollar grant to build a module house in Albiens. However, the property that was selected, in front of seven even row, it has been determined um, is located within a plant claim. The city will not allow that funding to be within, um, that area. So changes have occurred on the EDC, um, to where they are down to one staff number. Um, so the city will not be taking a lead for that project. Um, a new site has been identified. There was a new sketch street and we're working, um, with the county county land bank to acquire that property. So there will be more information to come on that project. But we felt it was important to continue, um, and kind of this will start. We're able to get this more product done in this urban access development to continue to have that one taken this off roughly. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Alvin Small Urban Task Force meeting on Tuesday, March eighth. With the city, county, county administration and Brad and Mayler with the county area transportation state. Um, we're attendance in that for that meeting. Um, so the group met to select and prioritize projects for, um, to utilize currently funds within this, on Alvin Small Urban Boundary for fiscal year twenty twenty two. Happy to share that the city domain has been rewarded an additional two hundred forty thousand dollars through federal service transportation, rural local funds to go towards the Hayden Road Street project. You can remember, um, back on the study session when one of the associates are engineer, they given there was here different roads and certain funding can only be applied to different roads. So this Hayden Road is a specific road that can only be utilized with these funds. We're happy, um, to be able to acquire additional grant dollars to, um, incorporate that project. So we will be, um, doing some preventative maintenance work on the bridge this summer of that project. Then whole reconstruction will occur next year, from South Monroe Street to twenty nine Mile Road. In my report, there is a breakdown of the funding. Um, majority of this project will be covered by grant dollars um, with an estimated overall budget of one hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars in street funds. Um, at the pleasure of attending first quarter Albiens Philanthropic, um, Women's Meeting on March eighth, the local giving circle, we voted to approve over ten thousand dollars to go towards L B three formation for the McIntosh Park Revitalization, Revitalization Project. To answer a few questions that were, um, posted on public comment. That project is set to break ground this spring with anticipated completion. Um, hope of a shooting for July fourth. That's lifted delay in materials and things like that could be moved back to office. So we are working very hard to get that, um, project completed for, um, an opening for the coming assembly this summer. And we are also, yes, working with the state to utilize some of their urban funds to repair the roads around that. We know that area is going to become a hot destination, not only for the, the project, but the residents who live within the area. They deserve to have good roads to, um, to drive on. So we have a proposal on what that will be to do all of this farming shoot. We're looking at one point eight million dollars. That not only covers the reconstruction of the roadway, but we will then also be doing the water and sewer work as well. So we're working hard to secure some of those, um, state art rock dollars that are available. Um, we had the third work session with the M M L coach and it's held on Saturday, March twelfth. I participated in the sixth session for the Albiens Leadership Academy on Monday, March fourteen. Um, myself, as well as Assistant City Manager Rich, and then a few council members, we attended the M M L Tapper Conference on March fifteenth and sixteenth. That was a great training. I'm really looking forward to taking advantage of information learned. The first session, we learned of a new, um, water program that the state is releasing, that if you are disadvantaged community, they will help you, um, write for it. Applications to take advantage of some of the state federal dollars to make some necessary repairs for water and um, sewer infrastructure. So we have already signed up for that and we have received the intake form. We're be working with Director Miller to get that completed and start taking advantage of, um, that grant program. I also attended the Public Safety Pitching Board meeting on Tuesday, March fifteenth. Comes up, you can recall, we're all receiving a blue now for a bullet increase, we're retired pitching board member. So with that, right now, the Public Safety Pitching Board, they are doing the necessary checks to see if that, um, increase is feasible. Um, once they have completed the actuarial, um, they will be coming back with a formal recommendation to council on whether or not we want to grant that whole increase. But I've also included individual department reports. So please take the chance to approve that to see what's happening in the individual, um, departments, as well as you'll start to see, we see up in court as well. So you can, um, keep in touch with what's happening at that level. Um, and just update on the study session from the road plan, we have started to develop educational materials internally, um, working with the city attorney to draft that valid language. And then we will begin, um, scheduling most of our home needs to really educate the community of what that looks like. This, yes, and the session does fall on the voters to approve that.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, thank you for the report. I, I was really excited seeing the EDC reports, comprehensive report, but I thought it was very exact like that word. I was curious, do you know how frequently they do the offering reports?
Um, as to, you'll get the message because they have a long meeting. Oh, so that was the last one that they have this happening for.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Um, so, yeah, councilor. I just like to say, I was told that, uh, City Watch, that there was a comment made that I don't answer people who call. So I just want to say to anybody who called, my home phone number, six two nine two two eight three has an answering service. Now, there's a lot of times that I'm not home because I went to a lot of things. I do see your food, food distribution. I take seemingly doctor's appointments and things like that. And so I don't keep home, but then to leave your number on my answering machine.
I believe that will be reserved for the, uh, the council section to manage.
Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, um, in the, in the report of planning and building, any residents financially struggling with home improvements or repair should contact the Department of Planning and Building for information on financial assistance? That's something, um, is there any like age requirement or anything else?
Look, if you're a homeowner, you need any additional assistance, um, Director Arnold can, um, connect you with different resources. Mr. and other community action agency and other different organizations that provide that, provide that assistance.
Thank you. Any other questions for City Mayor Chris Snyder?
Yeah, I got one. Um, now, Officer Kip answered this question for me earlier, but I can imagine it's going to be discussed, um, more widely in the community. And since we have so many members of the community out here today, maybe we can address it before the community. Um, the new vehicle that, um, the city purchased for the police department. Um, and speaking of Officer Kip, he said it was purchased last year, was just this, this year. Um, they decided to go with a pickup truck. Um, that was a cost savings and the, the typical vehicle that they do typically purchase, they don't currently have or make anymore. So they don't make the chargers anymore. Um, and the SUVs are overpriced. So, um, and he also said that every year they have to purchase a new vehicle because of the mileage that the rest of the vehicles have. They can't cover them, um, through insurance. So once you get a hundred and twenty thousand miles, you gotta take that vehicle out of service. So we're averaging the vehicle purchased per year, correct? Um, so just in case it comes up, somebody's mentioning, well, why is the city buying a new vehicle? We have to purchase new vehicles to stay in compliance with insurance. Um, we're not just primarily spending taxpayers' dollars.
Yes, and to speak on that, that is included in, um, the budget preparation. So I would come see for council each year for approval. And yes, that order was placed at the beginning of last year, but due to the delay with vehicles, I think we're, um, it's happening all over the country. We just got that this year. I mean, it has been, um, decal, but we're still waiting for it to be fitted for all of the emergency equipment. Trying to speak on revenues, we received an update on, um, what the city will be receiving in revenue sharing from the state. Unfortunately, it's not looking too good. We're looking at a head, hefty decline moving forward. So I'm providing you more information on what that looks like. So our revenues are not increasing. Um, so we need to be mindful of that when we go forward with making decisions on city services, things that we approve, things that we are using taxpayer dollars for, because we're not getting as much as we normally have from, from the state. And that comes with our population. Since we saw a decline in the population in the community, we are now going to experience a decline for the next however many years on the revenues that we receive from the state. So it's something that's, we should be all aware of and I will be providing you with more information on that.
City members, now that's directly tied to the census, um, the twenty, twenty twenty census, okay, yeah.
Any other questions for City Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Brown Jackson?
Yes, um, can we have another schedule of when, um, Miller will go around and do some patching? I have people asking about the patching of the hall.
Yep, and I believe the, including the report, they will begin, um, patching will begin May, May, April. One of the plans, they do not open until the fifteenth. So they will get started with that. I can ask him to provide a patch when he will set this above.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions for City Mayor? Councilmember comments?
I, I was saying that there, on City Watch, it had been posted that I don't answer people's telephone calls, which is not true. Uh, I do answer, I have. I, in fact, I pay every month for a landline so that when I'm not home, because I don't find giving my phone, my cell number out because I'm a writer. And so I pay for my landline. It's got an answering machine. And if they would just leave a message. Now, I find when I, when I see the light blinking and I go back listening to the messages aloud, soon as they say, you know, ask you to say something, they hang up. So don't hang up. Leave me a message at a number and I will call you back.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I can't believe that you sit here and justify council member's action towards a woman, period. And you being a minority yourself, boom. You should feel that is not acceptable. It's, it's funny to me how we were right here in your face. And you didn't hear any adverseness or the way I was being talked to or anything like that. But when I got in the hallway, you heard part of what I said. Like I said, women already have hard time in the workplace, not only in the workplace, but in the workplace of government. And it's also amazing how you keep denying people. He asked for a break. You deny that. When we all should have just voted on it to see if, you, you didn't even ask our input on it. You just denying of that. You also deny, um, the public of seeing of, of the presentation Miss Reed had with Mr. Robert. You, you denied that too. So it's a pattern here. And it's really, it's, it's just really amazing. It's just really amazing how you justify what happened. On my first. When a lady called me at home and asked me, was I all right? Because she had attended the study session at British Tree. I don't know if Miss Miller was still here or not, or if she had left. But this lady that called me to ask me, was I okay? She, I asked her why did she say that? She said, I saw the council member getting aggressive with you. So for her to say war. You still justify it. That lady is a member a resident of the city. She's a stakeholder. Just, she may not have big stakeholders, uh, money in it, but everybody that pays taxes is a stakeholder. And I'm, I'm, I'm very disappointed of the justification.
Any other thoughts about it? That's lovely.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Snyder. Uh, I wanted to just provide my sincere gratitude for being able to attend the Michigan Miss O B Capitol Conference last week. It was, um, truly an honor to be there and to see the rest of the folks in Michigan who are studying and, um, in this public space. Um, and to learn from other council members. I, I, I really am delighted. So I just wanted to, um, provide my sincere appreciation. Um, I also wanted to, um, make sure that we, as a community, especially having the mayor read those comments, um, former mayor, realize that there is such a thing as generative conflict resolution and, um, the ability to actually move through what we're going through instead of just denying it and saying that certain people have to go. I never intended for Councilmember Williamson to resign this quickly. I have talked to him and brought forward my concerns. He and I had a recorded conversation back in September wherein he admitted that he would, he had done wrong and he would bring that forward and he continued not to do that. So I think that each of us needs to be able to just pull these mirrors up and, and base whatever it is that we're running from and realize that, um, we can't just continue to sweep things under the rug. Um, additionally, um, I think someone mentioned the, um, the notion of, of City Watch news as, as bad behavior. And I just wanted to say it is far worse than that and the cowardice that, that, that is in harming the community. Um, and every person deserves to be treated with dignity and respect and, and be able to have a face-to-face conversation and a capital space to base conversations with Mr. Face. He knows that I feel like what he's doing is harmful and not productive in any way. And so I just wanted to publicly state that.
Any other comments?
If I may just add a quick note for, uh, as it relates to just procedure, uh, just, uh, as it relates to the comment that was read, I just want to make sure that, uh, the council and, uh, the city staff are aggressive of the rules that relates to written submissions I've mentioned there. So, uh, rule nine, sub G provides that the council shall accept written comments and copies of any submitted materials will be distributed to all council members. Individuals or groups are encouraged to submit written comments to the city council via email, via mail, or deliver to the city clerk's office for distribution. So based on what, what I've seen here, uh, as it relates to just the printed out, uh, a comment that was provided to council, I believe that procedurally that is in accordance with what is, uh, required by the rules procedure for Albiens. I just wanted to, to state that so everyone was clear for the, for moving forward.
Motion to adjourn?
Don't.
Take a question?
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Jackson.
Yes.
Baller. LeVell.
Yes.
And Mr. Snyder. Walter. And I call you out.